Okay, we're gonna get this meeting started tonight, March 2nd, 2023, six oh three. If I can have everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next item, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, we'd like to pull five point twelve and nine point one. And then there is a special agenda that we'd like to combine and run concurrent if that can become item five point fourteen.
Okay. Do we have any other changes?
Can you repeat that, what you wanted to change again?
Yes, we would be pulling five point twelve, which is the city-county tax sharing agreement. There was a last minute change, so that'll have to be brought back to you at the next meeting. And then item nine point one, because it was a future agenda item requested by Councilman Atkinson, and he will not be here tonight. And then we wanted to combine the two agendas, so the item for adopting resolution four one four sec- four six, accepting real property, would be five fourteen.
Um, I don't see a nine point one. Am I looking in the wrong spot? Oh, okay, thank you. My bad.
I'd also like to pull item now, item five fourteen, and have that voted on separate, because I need to recuse myself from that item. It's from, it's for the special one, the added, it becomes consent calendar five fourteen. That one I need to, because she's my landlord, and I don't want any issues in the future with it. So I'd rather vote on that one separate.
I just added it, that was the change that I made.
So let's go ahead and do the, let's go ahead and do the item.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the changes to the agenda.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Councilman Vosberg.
Aye.
Councilman Hedgecock.
Aye.
Councilman Atkinson. Mayor Protim Ramirez.
Aye.
Mayor Horn.
And I vote aye. Okay. Next, we've got awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations. Looks like we have two items. Uh, first one is presentation of Kalinga Huron Unified School District 2022-2023 Transportation Plan by Katie Delano, Director of Transportation Services.
Good evening, council. It is an honor to be here. It's been a while since I've had to be at the city council meeting, but it's quite great to be here. I am Katie Delano, Director of Transportation for the Kalinga Huron Unified School District. And it's a very positive thing. AB 181 was passed this past summer, and it's the first time transportation has really been looked at by the state legislation since about nineteen eighty. In nineteen eighty, it was, um, I don't like pictures. Nineteen eight, in the eighties, transportation was reimbursed, uh, set up to be reimbursed about twenty-six percent for the school districts. And in the summer, it's up to sixty percent. And that includes salaries, wages, costs, uh, you know, all our expenses. So we would be reimbursed up to sixty percent. But we have to make sure and present to city councils, to school boards, to unions, to the air board, et cetera, that what we do, we do do not charge. We do not charge for any routes or any riding on our school buses. We are one of the few districts in the state that does that. And we run our buses up to about three hundred thousand miles a year between routes, trips, competitions, field trips, athletic events, et cetera. And we do that for students, not only regular ed, but we're also special ed, McKinney-Vento students who are foster and homeless youth. We also, for the foster and homeless youth, if their city of origin is not Kalinga, but they are staying here, we do transport them back to their schools wherever they may be, again, at no cost to students. We run about twenty-seven AM routes, we run one midday route, taking home TK students to Huron, and then we run thirty-two afternoon routes. We have thirteen drivers on staff, we have four van drivers, and we do all our, all our routes within the district, either school bus or school van. And then anybody who is, works for the school districts, such as coaches, et cetera, may use any of our vehicles, again, free of charge. Our money does come from the general fund. And again, we are one of the few districts that do transport TK through grade twelve, regular ed, special ed, and all other students who need a ride. There are, of course, exceptions to who we can and cannot pick up, because there is board policy which we follow. And that is set by the board, which is a two-mile radius outside of the Dawson Library in Kalinga and Huron Elementary School in Huron. There's a two-mile radius, we do not pick up within those two miles, except there are exceptions to every rule. And there is an exception to that rule, and that is that we pick up at the Poseshaenei neighborhood, Amundaco Trailer Park, Sandalwood, P. Genie Worthen Meadows, Haynes Trailer Park, and Fairview Mobile Home Park within the two miles. So we do that, again, with great, uh, great, great, we, great safety and great care for our children, and our bus drivers are dedicated and well-trained, well-supplied, to do this for our school district. So we are here to tell you that what we do, and we hope we do it well. If you have questions, comments, concerns about our routing, about times, about anything, please call us, because we are always open to suggestions and room for improvement. Are we perfect? No. Do we try to be our best every day? Absolutely. But, um, you know, let us know, because your children are our business and they are our why. And if you ask any driver, they will know. And there are times that students get on wrong buses, and we're like, hey, hey, hey. Especially our little cute little TKers, as cute as they are, sometimes they just follow their friends instead of following the right bus. Because you know it's big and it's yellow, so it would take me home, right? So we do appreciate that people respect the bus, they stop for the reds when we're crossing students over, we do respect all of that. But the, with the excitement of AB 181, we're thrilled to be, to be reimbursed up to sixty percent, because it's about the newest thing and greatest thing next to electric buses, so we're excited, we're moving forward. Get it? Get it? We're rolling along. Anyway. Uh, is there any questions or comments or concerns about the transportation plan?
I have one. I, I, me being a buzz, uh, buzz rider student, I used to live in single farms for years.
Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah, we still pick up there?
Yeah. And, um, I, I know in town, I know sometimes, I know other towns, they, they do kind of send a message when they have snow, they have, you know, rain. And I don't know in the future, maybe if that was a talk that you guys could have about some kids that walk to school and they get drenched during the rain or the flood, like there's a street flood they can't go through. So, you know, I know a lot of, a lot of schools do have that, they send out a message, you know, you know, there's gonna be a storm, if there's a riot, you know.
All right, this is, we are probably in the most uncharted territories right now, because I don't think California has seen this kind of weather.
Yeah.
Um, and typically, we try our best to do what we can, but unfortunately, there's, our hands are tied legally as to what we can and cannot do from federal, state, and local levels. So we, we could say that, you know, it's a, it's a rough ride to school, but I can't give them a ride to school, because otherwise, I'm breaking laws and policies and procedures. So there are things that we can and cannot do, and some people think, well, I wish I could do everything, but I can't. But that may change, because there is, there is a Congress woman who, who got, like, um, no child goes hungry at school, every child will get a ride to school. That, that it might be a possibility, probably, maybe, I'm thinking most likely by 2025. So then that's gonna be a whole nother change for us again.
Well, thank you for the great job you guys are doing.
Well, you know, thank my drivers, because they are remarkable. They are. Thank you very much, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I didn't, there wasn't any other questions, were there?
Okay, next, we're gonna move on to item two, Kalinga Police Department 2022 Annual Report, presented by the Chief of Police.
Is it five?
Yes.
I'll let you do it. Thank you, Larry. I was able to have my notes on here, so this is great. Well, good evening, mayor, council, city manager, staff, and community. This is gonna be an overview of the 2022 Annual Report. And, but before I get started on that, I just want to thank everybody here. This past Tuesday was my one-year anniversary as your chief. So it was, I celebrated Taco Tuesday, Dean Tacos. But anyway, I, I just had a great time, a lot of support, so I want to thank the community for all the support I've received and the people I've met, so it's, it's just been really great here. There's been a lot of good work that's been done, and still a lot of good work to do. So with that, just get started here. Although in 2022, we, we did face some challenges, such as staffing shortages, maintaining shift coverages, and increasing gang violence, 2022 was also a good year for the department and for the city, which I'll explain in the following slides. I did have the, thanks to the city manager, I did have the unique opportunity to be the interim chief for a month prior to taking the helm. And during that time, I was able to assess the issues or the problems that the department was facing. And in doing so, on day one, February 28th of 2022, I implemented an assessment plan to my department and also gave me a chance to, to meet the community. I attended a lot of community events, along with the church services. I incorporated these, uh, these goals in, in my assessment plan, and the first one is being, lead and build the department, reduce crime, build community trust, and also had an internal goal, to develop, improve the employee relationships and within the department, and also with city staff. When I first started, and starting with the first goal, lead and build the department, when I first started, we had thirteen officers. And I believe in May twenty-two, we end up losing our canine handler, along with his canine, to a different agency, which brought it down to twelve officers, that temporarily. But that, that changed soon afterwards, council, again, and to helping us to re, to hire officers and recruit and hire officers. You adopted a pay increase that benefited the officers, which was added into the budget. You also approved five electric gas vehicles for officers living outside the city to commute to work from home, and, which was a huge recruitment incentive. And then by the end of the year of 2022, we had twenty-one officers, which made a huge difference, adding the additional officers. We started seeing a lot of positive, uh, if, you know, things happening in the community and deterring and fighting crime, answering calls timely and service, and also engaging more in the community just by having all these officers. It was, it was just great. Starting off with reduce crime, in 2022, the city of Kalinga was, was experiencing an increase in gang violence, drug sales, drug possessions, and thefts. And we end up having, ending of the year, was seventeen percent of an increase overall in 2022 compared to 2021, which meant forty-seven more people victimized in our city compared to 2021. These increases, and I just want to point out on this here, we always want to be in the green, but we're in the red. And at the end of the year, 2022, we did experience a lot of assaults that year, along with several more robberies, which increased it. But this is a year-to-year, and also we do the month-to-month. The Part One Crime Reports, it's a uniform crime report that we report mandated all law enforcement agencies monthly. It's mandated to the Department of Justice. The stats also provide us also an area for crime trends, too. But, but every month, we submit these stats, and there's seven reporting crimes that we report monthly. In reducing crime, I've always been a proponent of community-oriented policing and problem-solving, and a strategy called the SARAH model, which stands for Scan, Analyze, Respond, and Assess. It's a problem-solving strategy which focuses on reoccurring problems identified in our cities, such as gang or drug activity at apartment complexes or houses. To improve my officers' problem-solving skills, I implemented SARAH, and I trained my officers in how to apply it. And develop, developed partnerships, many of our calls for service generated are from apartment complexes and mobile home parks. To improve communication and identifying problem tenants involved in criminal activity, we met with twenty apartment, uh, mobile home managers and formed a coalition. We had three meetings in, in 2022, two in-person meetings and one virtual. And at these meetings, we, we discussed a variety of issues, but the important was, how do we improve our communication to help us identify those tenants that, that are causing problems, that are causing crimes within the community? And we utilized discussion, also the city ordinance, the rental eviction program, which was very positive, because it states in that ordinance specifically that tenants cannot be involved in criminal activity, drugs, gang, firearms, and it gives a whole list. And usually, the, how that works is that we end up identifying a problem location, and we usually send a letter to the owners of the complex, which then has to deal with the issues and stop the problem. But we didn't have to do that with this coalition of managers, because they had a clear understanding that this ordinance is what it was. So we were able to work with them every time we identify a problem tenant. They automatically took action without even wanting to getting a letter. So we just went, it, just by these meetings, that really helped us to displace a lot of individuals who were committing crime in our community. So it was, it was, it's a good ordinance to have. Next one is technology, and that alone, in December of twenty-two, council approved the Community Video Policing Program in the city, which involves placing ten cameras with license plate readers within ten intersections in the city. Mainly, it's gonna take the areas where we know, there's seven entrances to the city of Kalinga. Four main entrance, but there's seven. And, and by having these cameras in these certain areas, we're gonna be able to capture every vehicle that's coming in and out, especially the ones that are involved in violent crime and are from out of town or from another city nearby. We're gonna be able to get that information, so we're really happy with this. And the first phase involves the infrastructure, along with four intersections, and it's completely paid for by the grant or state funds. And hopefully, the tentative completion is in spring of 2023. And the next one is just, is building community trust, and I really stress with my officers the importance of engaging the community and building that trust. For example, every day that they're working and serving the community, if it's positive, not, with the exception of making arrests, is to do it very respectful, be respectful, and always treat them right, and, and, and build that relationship. You're helping them. And also, they took part in a couple of career fairs, youth career fairs, and then we tended a lot of events. I think I tended, if not all of them that I could think of. But I have my officers fully immersed what they can, like this Saturday, all the officers that are working on shifts, they're gonna be there, walking around, and being there at the event this Saturday, absent till calls for service. So we're, you know, so all these events that are occurring in the community, we're gonna be able to have officers there and engage the community in a positive way. And we're gonna continue to work on these, um, these overarching goals, I call them, and expand our work to accomplish the following goals. Apparently, some of my slides got cut out, so I apologize for that. So we went right into these goals. Anyway, these are the kind of the goals that we're kind of, I know it's, uh, starting with the first one, you know, it's been my experience in law enforcement, especially in law enforcement agencies, to always try to have one point seven to two point officers per thousand to provide a better service, protection to the community, and also build that community partnership. So currently, right now, we're probably at one point three. So what's that mean for the city of Kalinga if we're, um, you know, fourteen thousand population? Literally, we would need twenty-eight officers. But it's, again, looking at the future, hopefully eventually, we'll, we'll get to that point, but I did indicate the number of officers that would, would be great to have. As to the, uh, the phases through, uh, the phase two through five of the Community Video Policing Program, you know, we just received some good news this year, that we applied for a grant. We received the funding to also add those additional six cameras, which is a good thing. And hopefully, they'll be done by the summer of this year. And then, of course, create a police chief advisory board, which is, which is part of your public safety committee. It's really positive to have a advisory board. It really helps the police department, addresses issues and concerns from the public they're having, and also allows us to voice their concerns, and how do we improve services, which is huge. Create a new homeowner ordinance. This is similar to the rental eviction, except it's dealing with real property, holding the, uh, the owners that own that property responsible for their family that are involved in crime. This ordinance, hopefully, we get, council will get adopted. I have a draft right now, working with the city attorney's office. But if the owners can't stop their family members from involving criminal activity at their residence, then they could face a stiff fine, and that's what, that's what it's about. So it's, and there's more to it. Hopefully, when we get that done, present it to council, that I could be able to expand on that. But this is something we don't have, majority of the shootings we're having, or incidents we're having with narcotics are at residents that are not renters, their owner occupied. And, but we don't have any tools to deal with the owner occupies, uh, with the owners, to deal with their families that are involved in the criminal activity. So this is what this ordinance would do. That's it, my presentation. Any questions?
I have a question. So are you saying that more of the crime, the violent crime happens at owner-occupied homes than department complexes and the trailer parks?
What I'm finding, what we're finding out, that the search warrants we've been doing lately, since I've been here, half of them have been owner-occupied homes, from narcotics to gangs, looking for weapons. And we have a great ordinance for the eviction ones, but we, there's nothing for the owner occupied. This is a fine, so in other words, it's a progressive, so they get a second one. But again, we're in the, we're just putting that together right now, it's in a draft form.
So just a question, when you do do that, can you kind of try and break down what crimes are happening in each of those type of categories?
Sure.
So that'd just be helpful for us. I appreciate it, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to citizens' comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any item within the jurisdiction of the council. Members of the public, when recognized by the mayor, should come forward to the lectern, identify themselves, and use the microphone. Comments are normally limited to three minutes, in accordance with the state open meeting laws. No action will be taken by the city council this evening, and all items will be referred to staff for follow-up and report. Citizens' comments submitted in writing to the city clerk by 5:00 PM on the day of the city council meeting shall be distributed to the council and included in the record. However, they will not be read. Okay, we'll go ahead and open it up, is there anybody who would like to speak?
Good evening. I'd like to address your council in behalf of the community garden. Well, I noticed that it's listed, again, as part of your surplus items. I just want to let you know that, at the present time, the community garden is being used and cleaned by a couple of special needs classes. So I would really appreciate if we can just leave the garden alone for a while. Thank you.
Ma'am, can you state your name for the record?
Thank you. My name is Alma Sanchez. I live next to the garden, so I'm always trying to keep an eye. Thank you.
Any other citizens?
Good evening, I'm Hilda Crawford, and I'm here with the library, Kalinga District Library, just to let you know that we will have a, um, excuse me, let me start over. We have an event coming up, and it starts, uh, it's a program that we've had for a few years now, and it's called Cover to Cover Club, and it's sponsored by In-N-Out Burger. So the program dates begins March fourth, and it ends April fifteenth. All it require, it's for children, ages four to twelve. And all it requires is for them to read five books, and they come in, get their little log, and we mark them off. And then it's a total of fifteen books, so once they're done reading those books, they'll earn a, a certificate for, for a burger or a cheeseburger, hamburger or cheeseburger at In-N-Out. So if you have any little ones between the ages of four and twelve, you know, where they're at the library, welcome to bring them in, so they can get a cheeseburger or hamburger, once they read their books. And still waiting for you to come, Mr. Councilman Hedgecock, to the library to get your library card. I haven't seen you since the last meeting. Oh, well, okay, well then, next time you're on the road, just pass by the library stop, get out, bring those books, and then you can get your library card.
Hilda, we're all curious to know if you calculated a fine yet for that overdue book?
Uh, you know what? I haven't yet. But it's probably enough for me to buy a Mercedes, who knows? Yeah. But you may not have him at the next meeting, because he may be in the who's gal with, uh, and the chief for all those books. No, I haven't looked at him, but just bring them in like you said, and it'll be okay. But remember, you can go many places with that little library card, and you become an important person. So hope to see you. Thank you.
Any other citizens? Scott?
Evening, council. Scott Netherton, Kalinga Chamber of Commerce. I just wanted to remind everybody, this Saturday is Mardi Gras down in Kalinga Plaza from 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM. We have about seventy-plus vendors and activities happening that day, including four, um, acts that'll be performing on the, the big stage. All of them are from Kalinga. will be performing on the big stage. All of them are from Kalinga this time, so, which is very nice to see. So again, it runs from nine, or 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM. We hope you guys can make it. And I appreciate you guys. Thank you, chief, for coming. You guys are always supporting. Thank you.
Any other citizens? Counsel? Good. Okay, seeing that there's none left, we'll go ahead and move on to public hearings, which we have none. Next item is our consent calendar. See... Let's go ahead and do the vote on item 514, and then we'll move on to the rest of the consent calendar. Vote that one separate. So, what would you guys like to do?
Would you like me to read 514 to the record?
Yes, yes, please.
So 514 was the item that was on the special agenda that was moved over to run concurrent, and it states to adopt Resolution 4146, accepting real property located at 620 Sunset Street in Kalinga, and then the three APN numbers are listed there in parentheses.
Okay. What would council like to do?
I'd motion to accept it.
A second? We get a roll call, please.
Councilman Hitchcock? Councilman Vosberg?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Ramirez?
Aye.
Mayor Horn?
Abstain. Okay, now we'll move on to the rest of the consent calendar. Minus item 12. That one has been pulled. We have a motion. What would you guys like to do with this one?
I'd like to pull 5.5, 5.7, and 5.10.
Anything else from council? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to item 5.5 first. Councilman Vosberg?
So I pulled this item because I actually want to turn it into an action item for the next meeting. I appreciate Mayor Horn asking for the information on this, and I would like to suggest that we, the city, purchase 100 of these and have them be first come, first served to the people, and brought back as an action item, if the council so pleases.
I would like to suggest something on that item, though. It shows in the item, it shows the valve, and it shows an actual attachment. They make a valve for about $7 less. That just goes to your elbow coming off. You put that on there, and then your fitting actually goes on there. So that way, you can turn it off without having to replace everything. And it would save a little bit, so that's another option.
I'm okay with whatever council wants. That's fine.
Marissa, does it need to come back to council if it's within our purchasing authority?
It doesn't necessarily need to, but we can bring it back for the next agenda.
If they'd like to, it's fine.
Would this be an item that would be considered bulk item, so we would get a better price, maybe?
Depends on where we'd purchase it from. I think the one, the information that Larry provided was from Amazon, but we can definitely look and see if there's any, so, I mean, we work with a lot of suppliers, if we could find something that might be able to buy at larger quantities. So we could look more into it and bring it back at the next meeting.
All right. The only suggestion I would make is do like 70 of the showerheads, and then maybe 30 of just the valve. That way, if they want to just get a valve, there's a valve that they could do instead. It's the same, it looks exactly the same, except it doesn't have all the showerhead on it. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to 5.7. Nathan?
Yeah. I pulled this because, obviously, it says opposing initiative, the Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act. And I am absolutely in favor of that type of stuff. But as anything, that comes out of, you know, Sacramento, there's always a lot of different things that are involved in this. And so I just could not support it in its whole, because it takes away local control at almost every level. And it would cause, I think, some severe problems with the current tax situations and fees that we have. But I just wanted to note that I'm absolutely in favor of the taxpayer being protected. But this goes a little bit farther than what I would suggest. So I am in favor of the resolution. And I just wanted to pull it, because I put it on there so that the public, because I've been asked by the public, why would I go against this? So, that's just my comment.
Okay, and item 5.10. Nathan Vosberg?
So, I would like, on behalf of Councilman Atkinson, to just modify this to make sure that this is only used for dogs in Kalinga, and not animals that are headed to the rescue, so that we can make sure that we get the benefit for our residents, and not to be used for cats, but to be used for dogs.
We can specify that when we make the purchase and hand them over to Gimme Love. We can have them sign something acknowledging that that's how they'll use them.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve consent calendar?
I'll motion to approve it, as changed by y'all.
Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Hitchcock? Mayor Protim Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilman Vosberg?
Aye.
Mayor Horn?
And I vote aye. Okay, next, we're going to move on to number six, ordinance, presentation, discussion, and potential action items. Item number one, we have, actually, we've got three items. So we'll start off the first one, discussion, direction, and potential action regarding two future vacancies on the planning commission. Sean?
Thank you, mayor and council. Staff seeking direction from the council related to two future vacancies on the planning commission. There's two commissioners whose terms will be ending in April of this year. Commissioner Helmar's term as planning commissioner is set to end on April 7th, and Commissioner Jacobs' term is set to end on April 16th. Commissioner Helmar has expressed interest in seeking reappointment by the council, and Commissioner Helmar has served for seven years, as she was appointed to finish out the term on Commissioner Hill. Commissioner Jacobs has served two full four-year terms, and has advised staff that he will not be seeking reappointment for a third term. So in accordance with the municipal code, members of the planning commission shall be appointed by the city council. Any vacancy occurring on the planning commission by reason of death, resignation, or removal, or disqualification shall promptly be filled by the council for the unexpired term of such member. In this case, this doesn't apply, but this is just the statement from the code section. So staff seeking direction from council as to how you'd like to address the commissioner's term expirations on the commission. In this situation, the council has kind of multiple options when appointing an existing or a new member to the commission. So the council may vote to reappoint existing commissioners to a second term or a third term, as one has expressed interest in doing so. Any member of the council may make a motion, nominate a member of the public to the commission, and vote accordingly. Or if the members of the council do not have immediate recommendations to directly appoint, you can direct the city clerk to advertise for the planning commissioner position, and staff will then bring back a list of applicants for consideration at a future meeting. If council chooses to advertise the open position, staff will reach out to previous applicants, and then see if anyone's interested, as well as put an advertisement out for usually about 30 days. So council... And Michelle is here, by the way, too, as well here, too, so.
Okay, what would council like to do on this? The first one would be to reinstate Commissioner Helmar's term. And then the second one is to nominate, if you guys have anybody in mind to nominate for the commissioner, to take the second seat.
I think the second seat needs to go out for putting that out. Just get, see who wants to do it, so we can get some interest in it. Community involvement.
All right, you want to, are we able to do that? Do like a 30-day, and see if we get anybody else with interest in it?
Yeah.
For the second seat?
Yeah, so you can reappoint Michelle, if you'd like to reappoint Michelle, and then you can advertise the open position that didn't, that...
So let's just vote on, vote on the first one, and we'll wait on the second one till April?
Yeah, we'll bring it back.
First meeting in April?
Yeah, we'll bring it back in April, probably, maybe the second meeting in April.
Okay.
Mayor, I think we might have some members of the public here that may be interested, that might want to speak on behalf, if it's so pleases the council?
Yes. Richard? Yes, please.
Yeah, I'd be interested in getting back on. I was on before on a planning commission. I was also, I was on, I was a board person. I served for a while, about three, almost four years. You know, I'm involved with the city, so this is another option to keep and stay involved with the city, because I like working with you guys. So I want to throw my name in the hat, and if you think it's a good hat to wear, then, you know, I'm there for you. So I just want to throw that out to you, that I'm absolutely interested in getting back on the planning commission. Okay? Thank you. I'm going to run now, because I got to go to city, I mean, to a chamber meeting.
Anyone else? All right.
Mayor, council members, others? I'm Michelle Helmar, and I've been proud to serve on the planning commission for the last seven years. I've appreciated the opportunity to be a part of growth and issues in the city of Kalinga, and I would like to continue to do that. So, thank you. Do you have any questions for me?
What are your thoughts on Richard?
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, with that being said, I'd like to nominate Richard Hill to be number one on the list of possible replacements. Yes, for the 30, I believe it's 30 to 45 days. And then we'll make our decision in second meeting of April, on the second item, which is for second planning commissioner. Once we put it out to the public for possible, more people that are wanting to get involved and actually get on the board, then we can go from there and vote.
Basically, the council just needs to, whoever you'd like to reappoint or appoint tonight, you can so choose if there's any left, if there's still vacancies, then you can suggest that staff advertise for the vacancy.
So, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint, reappoint Michelle Helmar to her planning commission seat, as she, I think, has done a wonderful job.
And then base it off our list for the April one?
And then, and then for the second position, we go out to the public, if it so pleases the council.
I'll second it.
Roll call?
Councilman Vosberg?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilman Hitchcock? Mayor Horn?
And I vote aye. Okay, we'll move on to the next item, discussion, direction, and potential action related to 2022, 2023 water year and water conservation efforts, including revisiting the current water restrictions. Sean?
Thank you, mayor and council. This is the second time I can talk about water in a positive manner. So, as we talked at the last council meeting, the staff did get a, or the Bureau of Reclamation put out a public notice that MNI, Municipal Industrial Customers, for Predator Project Water, will receive 75% of historical use. Today, we have not, as of today, we have not received the official letter from the Bureau, but based on understanding the calculations that the Bureau uses to determine historical use and the 75%, I think Marissa had posted something on social media identifying that's roughly, that equates to about 37% of more water than what we typically use in an unconstrained year, a year where we're not really enforcing the watering restrictions. And so, with that, this item is being brought back to the council, as promised, at subsequent meetings, to kind of decide what the council would like to do in terms of the current restrictions that are in place, which is the one day a week watering, no watering the front lawns, the pool moratorium, and as well as where we stand in terms of our conservation, our watering efforts. I did speak to Mario. Based on what's on the agenda tonight, you can direct staff to move forward with implementing something, but we still have to come back and formalize any changes to what's currently in place, especially the conservation, I think it was a proclamation on the water emergency. So those are things we can bring back in the next meeting. But council could definitely direct staff tonight to start enforcing or, you know, moving forward with implementation of certain regulations. And just wanted to, so I'm going to leave it up to the council first, to kind of start the discussion, then if you have any details on what the different stages are on our water ordinance, we can, I can kind of explain those as well.
How much, how much water do we have, and when are we expected to be notified?
We shouldn't be notified anytime. When I, prior to the last council meeting, I had emailed the Bureau, and the Bureau had advised us and confirmed the press release they put out, and they said that letters were going to be in the mail in the next few days. So I imagine we should be receiving letters next week. It's just all, it's going to, only difference is, it's going to show what our allocation is.
How many, how many acre feet is it showing that we have right now?
I think as an estimate, it'd be around 5,760 would be...
No, 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 no. I mean, right now, as of right now, how much do we have left until we get that actual number?
I think we'll be maybe transferring close to 100 acre feet. But I haven't received the most recent numbers from February, so we don't know exactly what's going to be left over. But it's been raining and cold.
So if we were to make a decision to let go of some of it, that would be, we would still be somewhat covered?
I think, as staff is recommending, I feel like we can, we can get back to normal.
Okay. After tonight?
Yeah. And I can explain what normal is, if you want to know what normal is.
And that's, that's three days a week, or is that seven days a week?
So that's, it's seven, it is seven days a week. Larry, I, to be honest, I thought it was three days a week as myself, but back in 2017, the ordinance was amended for stage one to be seven days a week. However, there still is the daytime restrictions of restricting people from watering in the middle of the day, which is from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
Well, what I was thinking was, if we could get back to at least three days a week right now, until we have our numbers in, and then we can up it from there. But that way, people can start working on their yards if they need to, for the springtime, at least until we get our official notice. And then, look at implementing all the stuff with getting rid of the pool moratorium, and still staying on track monthly, at least, on water updates from you. So even, because we're going to have to learn to conserve long-term, so we still need to look at doing the, you know, the turf, the programs, water storage, like you talked about, into the future, because, just because this year's going to be good, we don't know what we're going to have down the road. So, you know, we want to get everybody in the mode to conserve, but when we have water, you know, our people are going to want to use it.
And that's the difference between stage one and stage two, is really the watering days. So if we stick at stage two, it's three days a week, if I can remember. I think it is.
That's the only thing that changes on item number two, and that is just the three days a week versus the seven days a week, or is there more restriction?
You have the decorative fountains, you know, unless there's a recirculation... You have the, the, the fount, decorative fountains, you know, you know, unless there's a recirculation system is added. And actually, no, that's gonna be in stage one. Stage two... It's actually two, it goes from no days to two days, the way the ordinance is written right now. So if we keep the resolution in place, I mean, that would keep it at, but you, I mean, I guess you could amend the resolution. It's, I think the challenge is, in a two-week time turnover, it's really difficult to convey that message and have everyone switch over for a week and a half, because if we get our letter, like, on Monday, you know, then we got confirmation, so...
Can I make a suggestion, uh, that we move forward with, uh, what Councilman Hetchcock said, but also give staff the ability to make the change, if you get that, uh, letter before the next council meeting?
And update us on the, on the website, on a Colinga website. Is it current now?
Yes.
It was brought up that it was wrong.
It's current.
It's good right now?
It was, it was current on the backend.
Okay.
It just never got submitted, and that's why it stayed the old one.
Right, so, you, we let people water a little bit more, and then update it as soon as we know. Because it's springtime, and as soon as it gets warm, people are gonna want to start getting their yards in, in order.
We can convey a message of three days a week, we can set the days, everything else kind of remains in effect. Uh, we don't have to, I mean, if you don't want us to, uh, institute the pool, I mean, not enforce the pool moratorium, we can allow permits to come in in the next two weeks, um, and then watering the front lawns, if you want to remove that. Well, we don't accept permits, so we can actually take in permits too, so. But if you'd like to start look, holding those back, except for just like seven days a week watering, until we get the letter, we can do that.
Start receiving permits, go ahead.
Yeah, same with, uh, Councilman, uh, Hetchcock. But in addition, um, can you guys, with that, can you guys, uh, start opening up the, um, fire hydrants to clear out some of the water?
Yes, sir. We, Chief and I have, the Chief and I have already been working on a plan, and set... So yeah, you'll, we'll be flowing hydrants, and we'll be doing flushings more often to really, not only from a public health and safety standpoint, but, well, it is a public health and safety standpoint, to make sure there's water coming out of the hydrants when there's a fire. So, no, we're setting together, putting together a plan with Public Works and Fire, setting responsibilities, and, you know, we'll have a full maintenance program in place for the, for our hydrants and our water system.
I got a question for the chief. Which, which part or which area would you start with first, considering how the flow is? Would you work from the top and go down?
No, we're gonna work with Sean and his team to kind of break it up into zones and areas, uh, based off the issues we had over the summer. So most likely gonna start on this end of town and work our way from there. Yes, sir.
So, just to get a confirmation, are we talking about, um, moving to stage, uh, two in two weeks, and then giving you the authority to move to stage one, including the pool moratorium removal, if you get the letter before that?
That's up to the council. So if we go, I mean, two days a week is probably fine right now, the way the weather is. I don't think people need to water more than two days a week. I don't think anybody even has sprinklers on right now, so...
We're expecting four days, four days of rain from Sunday to Wednesdays.
For the next two weeks, I mean, it's pretty much just, you know, I don't think it's gonna benefit...
Just trying to get people to wa, so we can replenish that water fund.
Yeah.
That's, that's my, you know, I mean, there's two counts to this. One is that, hey, we need to, you know, look definitely into the future of conserving water banking, getting people to understand, putting money towards, uh, things, drought tolerant things, but then two is also, we need to be aware of the, that if we don't sell that water, that the price is gonna unfortunately have to rise, and we don't, I mean, I, I don't want that. So I'm just trying to see if we can sell some water.
I mean, if we want to just amend what we have, remove some of the restrictions, make it three days a week, we can establish a schedule, and then we can, and then from there, it's easier to go backwards and say, hey, now it's seven days a week, if that's what you guys want to do, based on receiving the letter.
I mean, I, I'm okay with that. I just want to make sure that we can, that we're selling water, and at the same time accomplishing the rest of the goals of council.
Okay.
So do we need to vote on this tonight, or, or do we hold it off until our following meeting? What, what would you, what would you suggest? Do it, making a vote now, or at least making a vote now, and then readdress it at the following meeting?
I'm gonna let Mario.
Yeah, what we talked about was just if the council has a direction they want to give us, because it's coming back no matter what. So, uh, if, if you have interim direction, um, then you can give it, give it to us tonight.
So I would, I would suggest then the three days a week, and keep the pool moratorium at least for another two weeks, and then...
Except permits.
Yes, except the permits, but...
Except permits, but hold off until we get the letter on, let's start construction.
But once we issue the permit, we can't revoke the permit. That was the purpose of the moratorium, prevented from...
I think he meant, except permit applications.
Oh, I got you, okay. Okay. And then once we get clearance from, at the, once we get the letters, we can start, we can issue, we can basically move forward with the permits.
Any other items, council?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve it as, uh, spoken.
Just discussed, until, until the following meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. We have a second?
So the, the public, if they wanted to start watering right now for three days, they could.
Yes, and we're, are we confirming front yards too?
Yeah, please, yes.
Front yard lawns.
Yeah, lawns, not true.
Not driveways, we don't have that much water. Lawns. You water your lawn.
I'll second that.
Get a roll call, please?
Councilman Vosberg?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilman Hetchcock?
Aye.
Mayor Horn?
And I vote aye. Okay, next item, number three, discussion, direction, and potential action regarding making an advance payment to the Chamber of Commerce annual grant for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, and twenty twenty-five, and twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, in the amount of forty-five thousand. Marissa?
Thank you. So this was requested as a future agenda item by Mayor Protim Ramirez. Um, council previously authorized an annual grant to the Chamber of Commerce in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars for, uh, several fiscal years, and that was gonna be paid through ARPA funds. The city does have those funds that we have received, and the Chamber would like to receive in advance for the future fiscal years to help with all the expenses they have for the Derby relocation. So this is not new money that council would be approving, it's just advancing what you already agreed to provide them. Um, and all of this, all of the ARPA funds have to be expensed by December of twenty twenty-five, which falls within our twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six fiscal year that ends on, uh, June thirtieth of twenty twenty-six. So this item is just here for council to discuss and decide if you would like to advance those, uh, annual grant stipends, or if you would like the city to hold off and just pay them in increments as we previously agreed.
Yeah, unfortunately, yeah, with the circumstance about the Derby, I mean, I, I myself think it's, it's, it'll be a great idea. I mean, the, you know, just to have somebody donate that land, um, not having the, the money, the funds right now would just delay that, and Derby's just around the corner, and, um, you know, talking to Scott, there's, there's so many venues and so many stuff, they want to come in, and, and I, I just think this is, would be a great idea. It's not gonna hurt nothing, you know, i- it's better to be safe and sorry, and I think there'll be just a generalist thing to do to the, you know, with the way the relationship with the Chamber of Commerce that the city has, and, and, and forward these, these, these funds.
Go ahead.
So, um, I just got a message from Scott, and, uh, he said he wanted to remind people that the Chamber's putting in, you know, they're gonna spend pretty much every dime that they have on trying to make sure that this thing goes through, moving the Derby over, and it's gonna cost a lot of money in, in fencing, and it's gonna cost a lot of money in extra stuff. And, uh, he said that they were gonna, the Chamber's probably putting in about fifty thousand, um, and so this money will go to help them finish it off and to make it happen, and, uh, you know, really, without it, I don't, I don't know where they're gonna be at, so I'm in favor of it.
Another thing, Scott did have, uh, he set it up today where he, if there were citizens or board members that wanted to take a tour of the facility out there, and what it's, what the progress is so far, uh, I'm sure he'll set up another one in the next few weeks, once they do a little bit more work out there. Uh, that way, if there's citizens or, or somebody who's interested in actually taking a look at what's out there, that way you guys can see the type of work that's been done. Right now, it's, it's, they're do, they've done quite a bit all week. They've got it, that place is level, and, uh, now they're just finalizing the rest of the packing, and then this rain, uh, they'll be off this next week, so the rain will actually help, uh, pack it down even tighter for them. So it makes it less dust. So, so far, it's doing pretty good.
Like Councilman Vosberg said, the bulk of that money, from what I understand, is going to security of fencing, and fencing is very expensive, so, um, it's to keep everybody secure while they're in it, and to keep people out from vandalizing it. So it's, it's, they need it, and it's, it's already theirs, so I think it's a good idea also.
Okay, what would council like to do?
Oh, they also mentioned that they would like to have volunteers to help install it to save some money too, so, you know, people in the community, uh, hopefully at that point, when that stuff shows up, can go help, and maybe we can get it put in, uh, with some little more community support. Get your hands dirty. That's, that's how you support your community.
That'd be, that'd be a great idea, because this, this seems that like it's gonna be a great thing for Colinga, because not only like, um, not only as, as the Chamber of Commerce, um, reported, it's not just gonna be for Derby. It is gonna bring, uh, um, a, spring concerts, summer concerts, where even possible might be able to lend us some of their entertainment. Um, I've worked with Lourdes, and there's a lot of entertainers that want to come, and she's pitched up the idea to them, and they're, they're very excited. And when we, when we have stuff like that, we can't, we cannot take that chance. We, we want to take advantage of when the opportunity comes, and that change is just gonna open up more doors for Colinga. So like Mr. Councilor Hetchcock said, you know, if, you know, let's get our hands dirty, let's get out there and, and, you know, make it historical.
And I just want to point out that I understand that not everybody is happy about this, uh, move. I did abstain on the last vote, because I live in the vicinity, and it has the ability to change property values. Um, this is not a zoning, uh, thing, so I'm pretty sure I can vote on this. Uh, but I just want to remind people that in my vote tonight of voting, yes, it's not, the, the decision's already been made to, to allow this to happen. So this is actually a vote for the security of the event that will actually help protect some of the houses of the people that are not happy about this. And so, um, I just want to let everyone know, I know that people are unhappy, and, uh, Scott's informed me that there will be a meeting, um, subsequent to today, to talk about, um, when, and how, and where, and all the concerns that the community members around that area have. And so I don't have an exact date yet, but that will be happening.
Okay, what would the council like to do? We have a motion?
I'd like, I'd like to motion the funds for forty-five thousand, uh, to go forward.
We have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a roll call, please?
Mayor Protim Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilman Hetchcock?
Aye.
Councilman Vosberg?
I just want to make sure with the city attorney that I'm okay to vote for this. I vote yes.
Mayor Horn?
Now, am I okay with it? Because I tend to profit just from the event itself.
Wouldn't it be safe to say you'd profit no matter, no matter where it was?
Yes.
I, I think you would be fine. Because you're, you're not profiting from the move, from the, donating from the Chamber, you're profiting from the event, which you would do regardless.
Okay, I vote aye. Okay, next, we're, uh, we have announcements, uh, city managers' announcements?
I just want to remind everyone that March seventh, we have our chief's breakfast at Cafe One-O-One at nine AM. And also, if you are interested in submitting an application to be on one of the transparency committees, if you can please have those submitted to Shannon by March seventh.
Uh, council, councilman announcements or reports?
I got, I got, um, I don't know if I mentioned it last, last meeting, but I, I went to Fresno County, spoke, uh, to some of the staff, um, about, uh, getting funds, and, um, talking about our creeks, our surrounding areas, and, uh, getting Fresno County to get more funds for us to clean out, you know, Los Gatos up there, um, this weekend. A lot of people went up to, um, Condon Peak, they've been going out over there, and, you know, it's pretty sad how those parks have, not Condon Peak, but Los Gato has, you know, really, you know, take a toll through, you know, from, from the storms, and I went up there to make sure that we're not gonna give up. We're, we're gonna be picking at them to get those things, um, getting fixed, and getting, um, um, our surrounding areas, um, um, cleaned, and getting the people fined harsh forever, you know, does that, so, just, just an update for that.
Any other council? None? Okay, mayor's announcements, I have none for now, except for this Saturday for the Mardi Gras. It starts at ten o'clock, we've got four groups, we've got every, every single one of them are from Colinga. They're, they're local here this time, and it helps cut the cost down, so that we can actually, we, we won't lose. Uh, so coming out, we have every, there's four different genres of music, that, and they play everything. So it's gonna be a good turnout. We actually got a lot of games for the kids and the adults. And, uh, as Scott said, we have seventy vendors as well, so it'll be a lot of food as well. Okay, next, we'll move on to future agenda items.
Uh, could I put one in to, uh, approve, uh, installing the exhaust fans at the firehouse?
Any others?
I have a few. Um, I would like to remove the community garden off of the inventory of properties, uh, to be sold. Um, I believe this item does qualify for an exemption, uh, for green space, and it's currently being used, uh, by many different agencies, such as the schools, to provide learning opportunities, uh, for the children. And there's been a lot of money put into that, and a lot of volunteers, and I know that we could, uh, potentially move it to somewhere else, but we have a person that lives right next to there right now, that is, uh, willing to kind of oversee it, uh, and make sure that, you know, it doesn't get trashed and things like that. Uh, and people are still, um, putting in time and effort. Uh, just today, I think, uh, Tom was out there, um, shoveling and fixing a water leak, and so it's an ongoing thing. So that's one item. Um, the second one, I would like to update the city website section for animal control. Working with Give Me Love to include what people should do when they see stray animals, and outline the process for who to call and when, so that our public knows. And then the, the last thing would, um, I would like an informational item brought back and placed on the city website about the difference between landlord-tenant issues and code enforcement, uh, code enforcement issues, to inform the public on the differences, uh, the things that the city can do to enforce codes versus what must be handled under civil code, uh, that the city doesn't have authority on. And there's not really a time constraint on any of these, except for the garden. I just, the other ones, um, at your pleasure.
I, I think the animal control one would be a good one to discuss for that, during that committee, the committee itself, and that way we can get more insight and actually get it worded.
That's fine, thank you. I appreciate it.
Councilman Ramirez, anything? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to, uh, the closed session items. We've got two items for tonight. Uh, one was pulled, item number one was pulled, which is anticipated litigation. One of the, one of the cases that we have, and the second one is, uh, legal counsel existing litigation. With that being said, uh, the meeting will be adjourned until March sixteenth at six o'clock.